You're right.
I'd like to call the order for the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 11th. Please silence all electrical devices and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Nyelov, take the bow, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Prezvelinsky.
Present.
Ms. Silvas.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stemley. We have nine present and no one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelov, and everyone has received a copy of the regular meeting June 4th council minutes. Are there any corrections, deletions, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Fitzpatrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney.
All right. The June 18 Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:06 PM by Chairman Dabney to review the claims since the last meeting. Committee members Beatry and Prezvelinsky were present as well as council members Fitzpatrick, Simmons, and Carnes. City Controller Rich Murphy was unable to attend. Claims reviewed total $286,998.12 from the Riverboat Fund and $15,790.38 from the Boyd Development Fund. $250,000 in the form of a Boyd Development electronic funds transfer to NDOT, that's the Indiana Department of Transportation, and an Energy Savings Group, ESG, Energy Savings Project payment of $355,518.06 for a total claim docket of $908,000, I'm sorry, $306.56. There were no other questions to discuss. Councilman Prezvelinsky moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilman Beatry, and the motion was approved unanimously. Upon a motion by Councilman Beatry and a second by Councilman Prezvelinsky, the meeting was adjourned at 6:11 PM. The summary of claims goes as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, the Ciobra Group, I think I'm pronouncing that right, $30,961.88. Global Engineering and Land Surveying, $60,560 even. James Meyer and Associates PC, $675 even. Kiesler Police Supply, $114,897.60. Lake Shore Ford, $63,804 even. MMK Truck Center of Gary LLC, $105,320 even. S.H.E. of Indiana LLC, $9,718.64. And Waymeyer APS Inc., doing business as Waymeyer, $1,061 even. For total from the Riverboat, again, of $286,998.12 from the Boyd Development Fund. News Dispatch, 150 News Dispatch, $715 even. George Prowitz, $266.68. Recreate Media, $14,602.58. Corporate Payment Systems, $206.12 for a total from the Boyd Development Fund of $15,790.38. And then once again, that Boyd EFT to NDOT for $250,000, and the Energy Savings Group payment, $355,518.06 for once again, a total docket of $908,306.56. And that concludes the Finance Committee meeting report.
Okay, thanks, Councilman Dabney. Reports of special or select committees? There are none. And this evening, reports of other city officers and departments. And this evening, we have Ms. Latonya Trobman to present the Social Status African American Males Commission Annual Report for 2018. Good evening.
Merry Christmas. I will try not to be before you all long, but for the 2018 year, the Michigan City Commission on a Social Status for African American Males Factor Subcommittee has continued to work on community initiatives. The Subcommittee has continued to partner on initiatives with community groups such as the Indiana Black Expo, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People of LaPorte County, and the Ministerial Alliance and other local businesses. The Michigan City Black History Month Committee was put together by the Social Status along with these other groups. The Social Factor Subcommittee has completed four years of work with local organizations and community members in working with the Michigan City Black History Month Committee. This committee has put together a month-long celebration during Black History Month in Michigan City. The activities and events are educational and socially enriching for the whole community and has brought the community together in celebration of what African Americans have contributed to this great country. The committee focuses on providing communications for all of the events besides the ones they plan that are presented by all organizations or groups in Michigan City. The committee works with representatives from the Indiana Black Expo, NAACP, Michigan City Area Schools, Essence Rare, local churches, and community stakeholders. The committee has been able to get sponsorship from Horizon Bank, NIPSCO, Blue Chip, Health Link, General Insurance Services, Francision Health of Michigan City, Freedom in the Word Ministries, United Way of LaPorte County, PNC Bank, Artist Space Lofts, Applegate, and Associate CPA, Lebesnik Center of Arts, Young People's Theater, and Michigan City Area Schools. The events included a Michigan City kickoff brunch, a Black History Month display with a mini-display at Michigan City High School, Essence Rare Black Expo with career and entrepreneurship workshops, a quiz bowl, a Black History Month fax disseminated to churches and Michigan City High School athletic directors for basketball games programs, Express Yourself Talent Show, and Black Cinema Nights, which we showed Hidden Figures, Race, and Birth of a Nation movies. We also did community job initiatives to provide a job report to local businesses and organizations that service African American males. The job report is generated by the Executive Director of the Michigan City Human Rights Department and Work One, and the list of the jobs within Michigan City in close proximity to Michigan City. The partnering organizations post these job reports in their establishments. The partners in this initiative are Platinum Designs Barber Shop, Marvelous Cuts Barber Shops, Sharper's Image Barber Shop, and the Michigan City Housing Authority. We also did a Black Male's Annual Conference where we took approximately 21 students and six chaperones to attend the 18th Annual Black Male State Conference in Indianapolis, Indiana, at the Indiana Government Center. This event provided the students with the opportunity to attend workshops and gain valuable life lessons from speakers. During the conference, the students were allowed to have dialogue with the keynote speaker, Dr. Michael Eric B. Dyson. The Michigan City Area Schools allowed this day to be excused for the students, and transportation was provided to Indianapolis for the students. The chaperones consisted of school board members, locals commissioners, a local author, a basketball coach, and community servants. In other reports, we also have started an African Garden with the help of Beachside Gardens that is located at Friendship Gardens. The groundbreaking ceremony was done earlier this year as soon as the weather allotted, and Chairman Payne was there for the ceremony. And also last year, we were able to give out two scholarships to two African American males who both came from single homes. And if you have no questions, that's it for my annual report. Please have no questions. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trobman. Thank you. The claims docket this evening, on the claims docket, under Fund 2042, which is the Riverboat, there's claims of $286,998.12, and under Fund 2031, Boyd Development, there's claims of $15,790.38, and also included under that is the Boyd EFT of $250,000 and ESG Savings Project payment of $355,518.06. Is there a motion to pay the claims?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The claims will be paid. Ms. Nyelov, were there any petitions before us this evening?
Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on June 3rd and June 10th from DLZ Weekly Activity Report, ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the Clerk's Office on June 5th from Chief Mark Swistec regarding the 2020 rank structure proposal. Correspondence was also received in the Clerk's Office on June 13th from the County Auditor Joey Winski regarding requested waiver of permit fees for the Michigan City Courthouse.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelov. Our first resolution before us this evening, our first and only resolution, by title only without objection?
A resolution by title only terminating the assessed value deduction tax abatement for certain real property owned by 250 Property LLC and leased by Sandon Manufacturing Inc. within Michigan City, Indiana pursuant to IC 6-1, 1-12, 1-6. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Beatry.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Beatry?
Just briefly, this goes back, not quite a year, to August of 18. We had a tax abatement meeting on August 13 of 2018 where we thoroughly discussed the situation with Sandon. We determined that they were essentially in compliance with the abatement that we had originally granted to them, but they found out that they are eligible for an enterprise zone investment deduction which would take the place of the abatement, and that was a better option for them, and we agreed. So this resolution just puts into effect, formalizes, the Tax Abatement Committee recommendation to the council that was made last year. I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Councilman Beatry. Councilman Dabney? No. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Having none, are there any other council comments?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hamilton and seconded by Councilman Dabney and Councilwoman Carnes. Thank you. Ms. Nyelov, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Prezvelinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Silvas.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Stemley.
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelov. And our first ordinance under first reading this evening, Ms. Nyelov, by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for costs incurred by the Fire Merit Commission for advertising costs for new hires and academy training for new hires. And this is introduced by Mr. Hamilton.
And Councilman Hamilton?
We had a firefighter that actually put in his notice on Monday, so we're going to have to make an increase in this number to 17,000 instead of the original 12,000. So I'd like to make a motion to increase this to 17,000.
Support. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Hamilton to increase the funding for this ordinance to 17,000, and it was seconded by Councilman Simmons. Ms. Nyelov, on the vote, please.
Ms. Carnes.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Prezvelinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Silvas.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Stemley.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nyelov. With that being taken care of, is there anything that the author would like to add at this time? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Hi. My name is Bob Pollak, and I'm, well, my address is 100 Lake Shore Drive, Unit 102, Michigan City, and I'm a member of the Fire Merit Commission. And what I came before to talk about is the fact that we are having some significant problems in holding on to the firefighters as they become firefighters after we spend a significant amount of money to put them into this position. And it's, I would call it an HR problem, human resources, but obviously, if you have trained an individual for three months the way we have in putting them through the Fire Academy system, they've been through academic testing, they've been through physical agility testing, they have taken a drug test, they are prime candidates for individuals that are looking for people who can pass these tests, i.e. other fire departments and also in the private sector, and I'll specifically mention the steel mills because I know we lost at least one of the steel mills. So, long-term, we're going to have to start to look at a solution as to how we handle these kinds of HR problems. And I know that some of the Fire Merit Commission members have thought about this, but I'd like to call it to your attention just so you understand in the background that these problems are rising and we need to take a look at how we handle them. And any questions, and I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you have a number of these instances which you mentioned?
Well, obviously, here we have three of them, but in prior years, as I understand it, there has been somewhere between four to five individuals that have gone to other fire departments, and we've had at least one, and now we're talking the last couple of years, the last two years. We've had another one went to the steel mills. These are the kinds of things that are occurring, and we need to start to think about how do we handle these situations?
Thank you.
By the way, thank you very much for your vote. The money was badly appreciated, and if I can get in just a little bit of a plug, we are taking applications, so anybody between the ages of 21 and 35, if you have children, grandchildren, we'd love to hear their application. You can pick them up from the Michigan City HR office, the Fire Commission on Michigan Boulevard, or you can get them off the Michigan City website. And anybody that's interested, we'd love to have you apply.
Yeah. Has there been any, do you know of any other departments that have put things in place to kind of combat this issue?
Well, I understand, I don't know if they've got anything in place yet, but I understand that the police department is having somewhat similar problems, so I understand that we are looking at some way that we could coordinate this between the fire department and the police department, and some programs that we might put in place. I could give you one suggestion that just came out of the military, because I spent five years in the military. When we sent somebody to a school, not for a week or two, but for two, three, four months, they signed a contract that they would give us an additional time period. That's probably something that needs to be looked at, and I can tell you from a personal situation, I went in as enlisted, and when I graduated OCS and became an ensign, they immediately hooked another three years and four months onto my term. So this is something that I think we need to take a look at. I don't know that we want to copy the military, but they certainly do that. And if you went to an electronics school or a radio school, you spent extra time in the military. Any other further questions?
Hey, any other questions?
Again, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pollak. All right, anybody else in the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any other council comments? Any other council comments? Any other council comments? This ordinance has been held over for the second meeting or next meeting. Moving on to unfinished business, nominations. First nomination is the common council has one appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission. The appointment is for a two-year term. The nominee is to be a Marquette High School student. Is there any nominations yet? Pardon?
I think we have one.
Pardon? Oh. No, it is. Can everybody hear me okay? Did you hear me okay before? Okay. Well, I'll repeat. I'll repeat it for the crowd. Okay, the common, under unfinished business, under nominations, the common council has one appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission, and the appointment is for a two-year term, and the nominee is to be a Marquette High School student. So, do we have that nominee yet?
Mr. President, we actually had two Marquette nominees in our inbox for this agenda. We have Mr. Trevon Moore and a Ms. Alyssa Murillo. Both of them submitted their applications.
Okay. Do you have that, Ms. Nyelov?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Are there any other nominations for Marquette? Any other nominations for Marquette? That being the nominations, nominations are now closed for the Marquette High School student position. The council also has one appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals due to the passing of Mr. Dennis Knopf, whose term expires December 31, 2022. And at this time, I nominate Mr. Mike Johns to that position.
Support.
Is that you, right? Okay. Seconded by, in support by, Councilman Dabney. Are there any other nominations to Board of Zoning Appeals? Any other nominations to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Any other nominations? Nominations to the Board of Zoning Appeals is now closed. And with that being said, to fill that position, since there won't be any more nominations, is it okay with the council that we vote on that nomination? And, okay, all those in favor of putting Mr. Mike Johns on the Board of Zoning Appeal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Johns is here this evening as the meeting, under comments from the public, if you wish to, Mr. Johns, you can come to the microphone. Not yet, not yet, under, I'll let you know, and then if you want to say a few words, introduce yourself to the council, that'd be great. And I appreciate you showing up tonight to the meeting. Moving on, under unfinished business, we have to approve the Energy Systems Group's partial acceptance certificates for the Energy Savings Projects, which are at the Senior Center, the HVAC project, at the Senior Center, the lighting, at the park maintenance, the HVAC system, and at the Washington Park Zoo lighting. We will vote by, if, all those in favor of approving the Energy Systems Group partial acceptance certificates for the Energy Savings Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's been approved. And under, the last thing, under unfinished business this evening, is the Elston Grove Neighborhood Lighting Globe Lighting versus LED lighting. Lighting, in a way that we're going to conduct this last and final hearing on this item is to have, pardon?
It's, uh, it was the globe versus the flat, not the, I think both ways are, both are LED.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. You're right. It was the flat. All right. So, we will have, if the council wants to make any comments, they can speak first, then the public can speak on a subject, and I'm sure that there's going to be people discussing it on both sides of the aisle, but I guess in order to save time, that, you know, if one person has gotten up and said everything that you were probably, you were going to say, you know, if you're satisfied with that, that's fine, but if you still want to get up and say a few words, you're more than welcome to. So, with that being said, is, any council comments on this subject right off the bat?
No.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, we met with the Elston Grove Group, I believe it was about three weeks ago or so.
Yeah.
And we asked for feedback on whether they wanted the globe versus no globe on the lights, and the responses that came back, it was pretty much split 50/50 on this. So, heard passionate arguments on both sides of it, but when we actually went out and talked to the people, and Mr. Silvestri, Larry Silvestri, I know him, I saw him outside, I know he's there somewhere. That's why he sits in the same seat, I don't know why I'm looking over there. But he actually gave a presentation talking about light pollution and things like that to the group, which was appreciated. A lot of people went out and took a look at the lights and had a different perspective after you gave your presentation. But the information that came back was, it was pretty much split. So, I'd be interested to hear, once again, what some of the people have to say.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Are we allowing unlimited comments? Is there a timeframe on the amount of time someone gets to comment on their position?
Well, if we could keep it till three minutes, I mean, that would be fine. It's kind of the rule of thumb, but if somebody, you know, is passionate, I'm not going to cut them off as being a council president. Everyone has a right to come to the council chambers and voice their opinion, and that's always been my opinion on that, so just don't get into a 15-minute, 20-minute dissertation. I greatly appreciate that. Are there any other council comments? Councilwoman Carnes?
The idea that this is only an Elston Grove issue, I think, is a little misguided. This is a city project funded by the city, and more importantly, it's an environmental matter. So I don't think we can afford to be cavalier about this decision. The new lights provide good illumination, they're pointed down where the light is needed. I know there was some discussion about the AMA report, and it's clear about the dangers. The only people disputing the AMA report are lighting companies that are trying to puddle their bad lights. So, the Sustainability Commission passed a resolution in favor of the no globe option, and I would urge the council to support that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to give some background on how this got started, of course, Mr. Augusta, Dustin? Yeah, I came, yeah, I came to a council meeting, brought the subject up, and then Mark was Electric contacted myself, and Dan Legler from ESG contacted me, and we started talking as far as what we're going to do, and we decided that we were going to stop putting the lights in and let the folks that live in that neighborhood, because that's where these lights were going in originally, I know they'll be going across the city wherever these fixtures may be, but originally, it's starting in this neighborhood, to give them the opportunity to talk about it and express their concerns to the city council. So this is where we're at tonight, and this is what we're going to listen to, and we're going to make a decision so that Mark was Electric can get on with the project that they've been tasked to do and get this taken care of. So, with that being said, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity for coming in again tonight. I give thanks to the council for listening and also for you, Mr. President, that you've allowed it this. If I remember correctly, at our last council meeting, you indicated that you wanted us to contact the people that live in Elston Grove and get the opinions from the people that actually reside there and live there, and have them all, if we could, get them, to this meeting so that you could hear their comments. So we provided some people from here, from our Elston Grove neighborhood, but I noticed in the audience, we have many more people that probably want to speak also, but they are not residents of Elston Grove Neighborhood Association, so, and they're not residents in Elston Grove. So I just would like that to be noted, because at the last council meeting, you asked me to get the residents here, since they were the ones that had to live in it, and you, as the council, had made the decision initially, and you wanted to hear from the residents of Elston Grove.
Thank you.
of Elston Grove. So, I turn that back to you and any other residents that have anything to say.
Oh, yeah, and make sure that when you come to the microphone, put your name and address for the record, please.
Do you need mine again?
Just your address.
Janet Toibro Smith, 408 East 8th Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michigan City.
Hi, I'm Derek Dirks, 436 East 8th Street, resident, obviously, of Elston Grove. When these lights were first introduced to the neighborhood, I was the chairperson of the Neighborhood Association. I can't tell you how many hundreds of hours were dedicated to just these lights. The big problem was crime. And it was introduced to us to stop crime, introduce our, or enhance our quality of life versus the old lighting. So, with all the hours that were put into the study, they've had, you know, electricians telling us about how those lights would be better than what was there, I think they are LEDs that are in there now, if I'm not mistaken. But the globe is what is, makes it the historic part. That's, after that was done, then we became part of the registry. So, I mean, it all goes hand in hand. It kind of, to me, is like, well, we built a sports car, but let's take it out and put a fuel-efficient engine in there now. I mean, it just, it doesn't make any sense. It was introduced in a historic district because of the look. So, I feel, and I know there's a lot of residents that also feel the same way, that removing them globes would be a disaster for the look of the historic district. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Sherman, 810 Cedar Street, Elston Grove. I as well was chairman of the Elston Grove Neighborhood Association, and I also served on the Quality of Life Committee for two years with the Chief of Police. And as I've said about this matter is, anything that decreases our lighting is inviting crime back into our neighborhood. But I can say one thing about the flatlights that I know some of you want to have there. I live across the parking lot, about midway down between 8th and 9th, and those lights blind me when I look up at 9th Street and see those with the, the globes off of them. We've spent a lot of money in this city for the historical, you know, aspect of things. It's just not Elston Grove, it's downtown where we put all these lights in. We spent a lot of money doing that. Now, we're going to take the globes out and throw them away after, what, a couple of years? I, I think you can achieve the lighting and yet get money-saving LEDs in there and keep the look of the light as well. I just think it's, it's a big waste of money, myself. We should have thought of this two years ago. Now, we got light pollution. Well, the light pollution I'm getting is living across about a half block away from those lights and having them glare me in eye when I look out my front door. So, I wish we would stay with the globes and, and no decrease in light quality and coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Laura Henderson, 510 East 9th Street, also in Elston Grove. I'd like to start by saying that, to me, the biggest concern is for the environment, the effect that light pollution can have on the birds and insects. To me, that is the most important thing. However, I want to talk about my personal experience. After we had our Elston Grove meeting, Martha and I went around looking at the different, because some of the lights were changed on some streets, some not on other streets. We had a real hard time telling, especially, we started out on 9th Street, right by the parking lot, and over that parking lot, it's not a street light, but there's a huge light which is really extremely bright. It's not one of the street lights. It's particular to the parking lot. And it was blinding. And so, we really couldn't tell anything from there. We drove around, we looked here and there. I was like, yeah, maybe, maybe not. So, I went home. On my block, most of the globes have been removed, but there was one on the corner that I guess they missed because the globe was still there. So, I had a perfect opportunity to see the two options. And what I saw was that there was more light under the light where the globe was removed. And that is consistent with what the technician from Marquis Electric testified at our Elston Grove meeting, that the lighting under the lights with the globe removed was significantly brighter than with the globes. But I'm not sure that the measurements he took, which were specifically directly under the light and a specific distance from the light, if those are completely relevant to our concerns. And I'm also not sure if my perception took into account all the factors. I know that a lot of people are concerned about safety and the perceived decrease in safety in this area. I don't see it personally, myself, but I'm concerned. I don't want my neighbors to feel unsafe. And I think perception of safety is almost as big as safety. So, I do take their concerns seriously, even though I may not share them all. My hope is, my hope is that somehow this can be worked out with people who know more about lights than I do, that lighting technicians could figure out a way to address the environmental concerns and still have lighting that people are happy with. I don't know if this would be a bigger shade that comes out further, that would allow some sideways light but not light up into the sky. I don't know enough about it, but I would like to see something worked out that can make everybody happy. Right. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Pardon?
Hello, my name's Larry Silvestri. I live at 314 Kenwood Place in Michigan City. I would recommend that the Michigan City Common Council leave the March 5th, 2019 vote unchanged, that future LED lighting results, retrofits be done without, with no decorative globes. With, without the globe, the new Elston Grove LED streetlights are better than previous as measured by Marcus Electric. And without the globes, they're, they did measure that they are brighter than with the globes. And that only makes sense. The LED fixture or luminaire is the same. It's emitting the same amount of light with or without a globe. So, the globe is going to absorb light or refract light up into the sky, so some of that light has to be lost. So, the, without the globe, there has to be more light on the ground. As far as aesthetics, the, with or without the globe, Elston Grove has the most beautiful fixtures in any residential neighborhood in Michigan City, and that's a fact. These globes were selected in 2010 as a decoration and not for the environment and not for efficiency. The, the globe is a historical artifact from when there was a flame or whale oil or natural gas that wouldn't blow out in the wind. There's no need to have a globe with the LED, they're weather tight. Elston Grove has benefited from redevelopment commission spending by having the most streetlights per block and the most brightly lit streets in any residential neighborhood in Michigan City. They have decorative brick crosswalks, they have new curbs, new sidewalks, and new sewers. Cost of this was well over $10 million, and redevelopment commission will be paying half a million dollars per year for years to come for their streetscaping. The globe issue is not a sacrifice to Elston Grove neighborhoods. However, the decorative streetlight globe is a regional environmental issue. It's not a Elston Grove. The, streetlights are designed to distribute light onto the street and sidewalk. Any decorative globe will interfere with that distribution. This is, the LEDs are designed originally without globes, and that's our intent, to distribute the light. It'll waste light into the sky with the globe. It is false claim that light does not escape into the sky from a decorative globe. Anyone can verify that the globes create up light by viewing them from the upper floors of the art space or blue chip. You can, you can see light emitted from the globes. Earlier today, sent some email attachments to the council. I sent attached picture of Michigan City skyglow taken from 10 miles away at the Kemble Beach in Indiana Dunes National Lakeshore. On a darkest, moonless night, it's easy to walk without a flashlight by light pollution from Michigan City, Indiana, Indiana and a Dunes National Park. When the national park is lit up in perpetual twilight, we have harmed the environment. We worked to make the dunes our first national park, but we're harming a natural feature of the nocturnal habitat. We can provide safe lighting to Michigan City residents without directing light into the sky. In fact, when wasted light is directed down onto the streets and sidewalks, we have more usable light for safety. So, without the globes, more light has to be going down onto the streets. There is a sample of scientific papers that I sent, but there's many others that provide evidence to the fact that light pollution has harmed the environment and our health. The June 2016 AMA report supported and verified, is supported and verified by recent scientific reports. A year after the AMA report, the Nobel Prize in Medicine was awarded for finding that connections between light and our biological clock, it's a genetic biological clock that is in every cell in our body. The LED Trade Magazine tried to debunk the 2016 AMA report, but now that Nobel Prize was issued, they are believers. Here's a quote from October 2017 LED Magazine article. "The genetic clock regulates critical functions such as behavior, hormone levels, sleep, body temperature, blood pressure, metabolism. Messing with the clock could throw off any of those functions, which has ramifications for health and well-being and has been linked to other research, to diseases including cancer, diabetes, and more. Light is one factor that can throw the clock out of rhythm." This is from the LED Trade Magazine. "Threats to the environment are climate change, habitat loss, insecticide, and light pollution. Light pollution can be greatly reduced by simply directing light down onto the streets and sidewalks and not up into the sky. Light pollution should be the easiest to solve, and immediate benefits would be reducing carbon emissions from wasted energy, improving human health, reversing habitat loss by providing natural nocturnal wildlife environment, and eliminating direct killing of confused birds and insects." I just got another 30 seconds or so. According to UN Environment Biodiversity Expert Marietta Saakalain, "The world's insects are hurtling down a path to extinction, threatening catastrophic collapse of nature's ecosystems. We urgently need to take action on many fronts to stem the decline." Recent scientific studies verify this UN statement, that flying insects have declined by 75% in the last 27 years and are declining by 2.5% per year. When was the last time you saw insects swarming around a streetlight? When was the last time you had to clean an insect off your car windshield? It's easy to provide for safe street lighting and not destroy the environment. You made the right decision at your meeting on March 5th, 2019, and I recommend that you not change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silvestri.
Mark Sherman again, from 810 Cedar Street. I believe Ms. Carnes said that this is going to go throughout the city, right? Just only Elston Grove, where you're going to take the globes off the lights and not Pine Street and downtown where the globes are hanging from the lights? Is it, I mean, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we, we don't get into a question and answer.
Okay, well, let me go back to this. If we're doing it here in Elston Grove, and Elston Grove can't be the only thing that's causing all the light pollution, it's this big town, okay? So, if you're taking the globes off our lights, I would assume that you're going to do that to these other hanging lights and everything else you got around town, which, once you take the globes off, they're no longer a light. I mean, look at Pine Street. You take that globe off, and all you got is a little bit of fixture top so high, you're going to, you're going to replace the whole pole, the light and everything else? And I just came back in Florida, and my windshield is so covered with bugs, I couldn't even see through it, if you've ever come out of Florida. And I have bugs flying around my lights too, so I don't see why this has became an issue as much as we should be worried about people walking around, breaking into our cars, looking in our windows, standing in the streets drunk at nighttime. When you light it up, they tend to stay in the dark. You shut the lights down, you're going to be in the dark.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, State Council and President, President's seat. My name is Dahlia Gigas, and I am the president of the Sustainability Commission for Michigan City, and I would like to read our resolution that we passed on June 13th. It's recommending that all Michigan City outdoor light fixtures be fully shielded with no light escaping above the horizon, and that they be 3,000 Kelvin or lower CCT, which is correlated color temperature, but allowing an exception for airport and port authority navigation lights, as well as non-permanent construction lights, safety warning lights, and other purposes such as outdoor commercial sites, sales lots, and sports stadiums only during regular operating hours. Whereas, the Michigan City Common Council is currently engaged in comprehensive energy audit and savings project designed to provide energy savings and in its early stages of retrofitting outdoor lights, whereas full consideration of public safety, costs, energy, conservation, and protection of the environment should be given to this project. Whereas, the American Medical Association supports proper conversion to LED lighting, which reduces energy consumption and decreases the use of fossil fuel, and the American Medical Association encourages the use of 3,000 Kelvin or lower lighting for outdoor installations such as roadways. Whereas, the American Medical Association recommends that all LED lighting should be properly shielded to minimize glare and detrimental human and environmental effects. Whereas, shining light into the sky is the cause of light pollution and is responsible for disruption to bird migration, insect population decline, harm to human health, and is harmful to the environment in general, according to numerous scientific studies. Whereas, shining light into the sky is the cause of wasted energy resulting in annual release of over 14 million tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere costing over 2.2 billion, according to the International Dark Sky Association. Therefore, be it resolved by the Commission on Sustainability of the City of Michigan City, Indiana as follows. "We hereby urge the City Common Council to instruct all entities and individuals involved in the energy audit that all upgrades to Michigan City municipal-owned LED outdoor light be directed sufficiently below the horizon to eliminate glare and skyglow." Number two, "We hereby urge the Michigan City Common Council to instruct all entities and individuals involved in the energy audit that upgrades to LED outdoor light be 3,000 Kelvin or lower," the CCT, the correlated color temperature. "We hereby urge the Michigan City Common Council to write a light pollution ordinance requiring that all new outdoor lights in Michigan City be directed sufficiently below the horizon to eliminate glare and skyglow and be 3,000 Kelvin or lower. Exceptions should be allowed for airport and port authority navigation lights, as well as non-permanent construction lights, safety warning lights, and other purposes such as outdoor commercial sales lots, and sports stadiums only during regular operating hours." The Michigan City Commission on Sustainability requests that the city clerk send copies of this resolution to the members of the Michigan City Common Council and the Michigan City Mayor, Ron Meyer. And it was adopted by the Michigan City Commission on Sustainability on the 13th of June. And it was adopted by the Michigan City Commission on Sustainability on the 13th of June, 2019. I just want to add to that is that if we can have more lighting and protect the environment, I don't see what the, you know, confusion here is, because it is going to affect the whole city. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Been a long time since I've been to one of these. Roger Willoughby, 401 East 7th Street. Light pollution is real. I do not disagree with Ms. Carnes. Light pollution is so it does not infringe on your neighbor or above the sky. When we go to LED, you lose light. Plain and simple. I don't care what CSG or whatever the name of the company is, when you go to an LED fixture, you lose lumens. When you lose lumens, you lose light. So we have a light pollution issue with the fixtures. The burn with the community is we spent tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars on these fixtures, and I don't think we've had them five years. That's an epic fail. It's an epic fail. And that's the bottom line. And we should be angry. So my proposal to consider, keep Elston Grove out of it for this first phase. Come back to the table, use your experiments at the senior center, light pollution, and work it out. We don't have to be in part of this light pollution phase. The entire city has the globes. You spent hundreds of thousands of dollars down the boulevard. What's the big deal about, if I had to guess, 90, 100 fixtures in Elston Grove? I didn't ask them to spend all that money on all those lights. Wasn't my idea. But you can't keep coming back to the coffer. Every time I pick up the newspaper, it's been tens of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we just don't have. Whenever you go to Blue Chip, that tells you, people, we don't have the money. You have to stop. You have to. The city isn't growing, no matter how many hundreds of millions of dollars you're trying to spend here. The population is not increasing. You have to have a timeout and think about what you're doing. And it's a tough job. But to have this silly discussion to just spend money for something that is there, your next project, don't put the globes in. There's other streets in this town that need more light. Why waste it on Elston Grove to do a redo? What sense does that make? Doesn't make any sense. That's what you're here for. We don't have to have a resolution to spend money every single meeting. There isn't a month that goes by that you people don't reappropriate money. This town is broke. Admit it. You have big problems ahead here. Thank you. And you can't continue to come to me on my property tax, or the city will never grow. It'll be just like Chicago. Nobody will live there, because they can't afford it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, I must use my legal name, Willa Faymore, and I live at 515 Grace Street. I moved into my house on Grace in 1992, and we put up a motion detector light on our house, in the front and in the back. And thank God, I have not had anybody break into my house while I've been away. I think Elston Grove, you guys have put the lights in at Elston Grove, and we need lights in Eastport. So please, come to Eastport with the rest of those lights and leave Elston Grove alone.
Amen.
Hi, my name is Karen Dirks. I'm at 436 East 8th Street. I would just like to add one comment in regards to the lights, what they look like aesthetically without the globe. It looks like they've been broken out and vandalized. They look pathetic. I don't know aesthetically how you could think it looks historical, because it looks horrible. It just looks like somebody vandalized the glass, and it looks terrible. And that's all I'd like to add.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
My name is Carol Block, and I live at 610 Pine. And we have the globes on Pine, and I like the light on Pine. But I see in other places in Elston Grove, it's very dark, and I would not want to walk home from the train there. And the new lights you're talking about, I've compared them, because there are some right now, and it's a cold, weak, ineffectual light. It doesn't spread out so that you can see very far, and you can't see between the buildings with that either. I think the globes should stay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
One last comment, if I might. Janet Toyra Smith, 408 East 8th Street. As a resident of both former redo on Elston Grove, current revision on lighting on Elston Grove, as a tax-paying citizen, and as a live, living person, I would like to put more weight on human life and safety than I would that of insects. So I would like lights in Elston Grove. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this subject? Anyone else wish to speak on this subject? Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed, and I'll open it up for any council comments, anyone from the council wish to speak on this issue? Anyone from the council wish to speak on the lighting issue? Anyone, Councilman Hamilton?
We're not looking at adding more lights or taking more lights away. The only thing we're changing is whether they have globes or not. No, we're not adding any more light poles or taking any light poles away. This is what I'm saying. The globe or no globe is what this council is voting on at this point. So everybody knows that we're not looking at removing any poles or doing that. Elston Grove is in the historic district. The city put it in the historic district. I look at Elston Grove, knowing that the houses there are not the most energy efficient, because no matter what you do, they will not be. The aesthetics of Elston Grove are supposed to be of historic. So when I think of historic, I think of the lights with the globes. Do I think it's the best thing for the city? I'm not sure on that. But I think in that area, you have to leave the globes. If we have an area that the houses have to be of historic look and appearance, and when you drive the streets, you see the bricks, then the lights have to have the globes in order to match. So that's why I voted globes the first time, and I'm going to vote globes the second time. Thank you.
Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, when this first came up on the, at the council meeting, and we voted globes or no globes, it was, I had the most simple approach to the whole thing when it came up. My thought process was, nobody came to me to ever complain about the globes. So I just said, I'd vote to keep the globes. It was that simple to me. I didn't know anything about light pollution and all these other things going on, insects dying, and even going out now and looking at both lights, I don't know too much of a difference. I'm the kind of guy that has no lampshades in my house, so the light can go everywhere. So with me, it was just as simple as, nobody, nobody complained about the globes. So when we came around for the first vote, I just said, keep the globes. So I voted the first time to keep globes, and, you know, I'll just stay with that, because, you know, like I said, my logic was very simple. Nobody from the neighborhood in my first ward came to me to complain about the globes, like, we need to take them off. So I voted to keep them on. Stay with what we had.
Councilman Stimley.
Like you said, I see, I see both points to the, to the, to the issue. I see the same amount of light coming out of them. And I'm a member of many environmental organizations and, you know, president of Zoological Society. And with our mission statement, we're here to protect all wildlife. And I concern, I have your concerns about public safety, which, like I said, it puts out the same amount of light. So I'm, I am going to vote for no globes.
Any other council comments? Councilman Beatry.
I appreciate public opinion as much as any of us do. I wasn't at the meeting that we asked Elston Grove residents to go to, but I talked to my colleagues about that meeting, and I just asked, how many people were there? And they said, well, there, there weren't a lot of people there. And I said, what were their opinions? They said, well, it was pretty much split, one way or the other. Some liked the globe, some didn't. Since then, we've all probably learned more about the implications to lights in the air and lights on the ground than we ever thought was possible. And if there were a groundswell of dozens and dozens of residents who were complaining about the no globe, that would mean something to me. But in the face of that, we've got engineers and scientists that are telling us, it's not a good thing to have the globe. So barring a groundswell of support in the other direction, which I'm not seeing, I'm going to vote no globe as well.
Any other council comments? All right. I just have a couple comments to make, real quickly, is that I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to talk about this issue, and I think the public has had enough time and enough input on this issue. And I think the council was very fair with this. We actually don't take second votes on a lot of items. I think this is the first time I've been on a council that we've come back in three months and took another vote on the, on the item. And the, to me, the folks down in Elston Grove are very fortunate. They have four lights per block. Other residents in Michigan City have one block, have one light on each corner. So I think that's very fortunate. And getting to the scientific portion of it, appreciate Mr. Silvestri's explanations of that. I'm looking at it from a safety standpoint. I'm looking at it from a safety standpoint, and I was an environmental manager, and I care about the environment. I was an environmental manager for 17 years at United States Steel, trying to keep everything under control. And I know what it takes to try to protect the environment. But I also have to remember to take care of the citizens, to make sure that our neighborhoods are lit and well-lit for safety purposes. With that being said, even from our first vote, I voted for the globes, because I could see, in my eyes, I could see a difference between the globe and no globe with the LED. The other thing I could see is the globes, to me, are a finished product on these poles, and that was the reason, I'm sure, that they were purchased back in 2010. To me, it just looks like an unfinished product. I never seen poles before like that, without globes on them. So I think that that kind of finishes it up and makes the neighborhood look nice. And I think that was the purpose to begin with. So with that being said, those are my comments. Is there a motion? We need to have a motion to vote on this, right, Mr. Myers?
Yes, the current situation, of course, is that there, there's a flat lens. So if somebody wants to move to change, to change it to globe, somebody needs to make the motion, and it's got to be seconded and then voted on to change it to globe.
So is there a motion to change these from the flat to the globe?
I'll make that motion.
Or, okay, is there a second?
So this is just to get to the vote. Support it.
Okay, second by Councilman Dabney. On the vote, Ms. Nyland.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Hamilton.
Hold on a second. Now, this, the motion was to change to globe. Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton.
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Silvers.
Nay.
Mr. Simmons.
Nay.
Mr. Stimley.
Nay.
Mr. Beatry.
Nay.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Ms. Carnes.
Nay.
We have three in favor and six opposed.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming. Under new business? There's no issue items under new business? Any comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
My name's Mike Johns. The council members that don't know me, lifelong member, resident of Michigan City. Just retired from the South Shore Railroad and wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to let me serve. Donny, thanks for your nomination. I appreciate it, and I'm glad to be involved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Glad to have you on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I know you could do a fine job, because I know you care, you and your family care about Michigan City very much.
Willa Faymore, 515 Grace. I have a question about the annual reports for the boards and commissions. I noticed that there's only four commissions that have to do annual reports, and those commissions send you monthly reports with all the information that they give you in the annual reports. So is there a reason or purpose why they, only four commissions have to do annual reports and the other commissions don't? That's my question.
I can answer that after the meeting. Okay? I'll try to give you the best I know answer.
Larry Silvestri, I'm at 314 Kenwood Place in Michigan City. The Sustainability Commission resolution requested or urged the city council to come up with a light pollution ordinance that does not involve putting less light on the street or making anybody less safe. If less light was projected into the sky, that would mean more light is put onto the ground where it's needed. I think the council respectfully, I would respectfully request that the council consider a basic light pollution ordinance dealing with the AMA report, the 3,000 Kelvin or less and no light projected above the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public wish to speak on any subject?
Merry Christmas again. Latania Troutman, 201 Holiday Street. Yesterday, I was filed home. It was approximately 9:30 PM. Again, I was coming from off of Holiday. I tried to take Michigan Boulevard for better lighting purposes, and once I came back around the corner to Holiday Street, a white truck followed me several times and bent the corner with me. There's absolutely little to no lighting on Holiday Street. And I'm just begging with the council to please consider lighting in other areas. I walk. I walked here today to come to this meeting. I will walk home. It is dark. I am a female. I don't care about the bugs. I care about my safety and the fact that I don't own a gun, I don't own any weapons of any sort. And I am kind of cute, if I must say so myself. So safety matters to me. Please come to my neighborhoods, put some lights up so I can, because I literally, my my phone died right now, okay? So if my phone dies, I have no one to call when this white truck shows back up for me to say, hey, I can't call the police, no one can see me, so I'm urging you guys to look into these other communities to put some lights there, too. Please, thank you.
I'm Roger Willoughby, 401 East 7th Street. When you talk about lumens, Kelvins, ADA, MMA, I hope to see next meeting that you have your meeting with your can lights on and turn these lights off, because you have five times more light than what I have out there. So when you digest these numbers, understand what 3,000 Kelvin is. Just understand that, because it's right here. You didn't even notice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should speak on any item? Public comment is now closed. Are there any comments from the council? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I just wanted to share with the council and the public in regards to Michigan City Police Department exhausting their eligibility list for new applicants. As of May the 29th this year, 2019, they tested for their eligibility list. The 29th of May, they had a total of 26 applicants apply. Of that 26 applicants who applied, you had 13 white males, two white females, three African-Americans, males, one Asian male, one Asian female, two Hispanic males, and two male-mixed and two female-mixed. And they ended up testing 21 of those 26 applicants, and a total of, out of that total of 21, 10 passed the test. Of those that passed, you had seven white males, one African-American male, one Asian male, and one mixed male. And with that, that was 10 that passed the test, and out of that 10, they ended up with an eligibility list, an existing eligibility list of nine applicants, and that's where they stand today with nine applicants on their eligibility list.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Good information. Any other comments from the council? I just want to make a comment. I want to thank the Main Street Association or the Swale Music Festival that took place last Saturday. Yeah, I went down there, a lot of fun, good crowd, good refreshments on a beautiful Saturday afternoon, so appreciate the Main Street Association for all the hard work and efforts they do, because without that, without that organization and that group, I don't know what would be going on down in the downtown area during the summertime, so I want to thank you and thank all, you know, I know there's some folks here from the Main Street Association tonight, so thank you very much and keep up the great work. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.